Take an inordinate amount of time, but we're going to get through the data that we've got so that everybody has an opportunity to digest what we know. I'll wait till everybody's seated and then we're going to start with the Kimley Horn presentation And I would like to thank Vice Mayor Schulman for being here to listen in on us today and make sure that I know what I'm doing. He didn't hear me. Yeah, you need to bring it over.
Good evening. My name is Chris Rhodes with Kimley Horn and Associates and for lack of a better term, I'm a geeky traffic engineer who's had the privilege of working on this campus since 2018. I'm here tonight representing Bristol Motor Speedway. We will be their traffic engineer to assist them with the preparation of a transportation management plan. So what we'll do tonight is go over an outline of what we will do as part of the plan and can certainly address questions at the end. So I'll just run through this few slides. On to slide number one. So what will we do with the transportation management plan? The components of that are to look at pre-event and post-event traffic and parking and figure out a game plan to get fans to the Speedway and away from the Speedway in an orderly manner. We will address a number of different scenarios, sort of the maximum attendance event, which will be roughly 30,000 fans. We think that might happen once or twice per year. The typical mid-range event, 10,000 to 15,000 fans might attend that and that will happen roughly maybe five times per year. And then the local events, and those are anticipated to be less than 10,000 fans and happen roughly 10 times per year. The TMP will address the ingress and egress of vehicles, looking at parking, and that is on-campus opportunities as well as walkable adjacent nearby off-campus opportunities for parking, looking at how are we routing pedestrians, bicyclists, and how can we leverage transit, whether that be shuttle service or the WIGO public transit routes that are in the area in and around the fairgrounds campus. And then finally, we see that in a lot of sporting venues today, the increase of ride share or shuttle service where needed and looking at what are those options from a mobility perspective. Next slide, Laura. So quickly, just an overview of some of the recently improved, recent improvements on the campus as well as some other things that will be coming online. Metro Nashville, NDOT, will install sidewalks along Craighead Street, starting at Nolansville and work their way on the north side of Craighead over to Fair Park Phase One. That'll be a 12-foot sidewalk that'll be built this year. That will benefit a number of events where ride share is an option because Craighead is one of our corridors where we've got a long straight segment where we can serve ride share pickup and drop off. So having a sidewalk network with signage to help that be more viable will be a good thing that'll be coming to the campus this year. Dirk was here earlier for the actual fair board meeting and he mentioned the on-campus parking mixed-use parcel 8C. That parking garage will come online later this year, late summer. There will be public stalls available in that facility for an MLS soccer event. It could be a flea market event and ultimately for Speedway opportunities as well. And then I think we all know this, but we're excited that we've got both the Wedgwood Extension built and open to traffic. We've got a really nice streetscape Benton Avenue that fronts the park, will front the Speedway and the mixed use in around the area that's online. And then another improvement, it'll come online or will start construction this fall, will be an additional lane on Craighead Street as we approach the Nolansville intersection. So the developer who's building mixed-use 8C, that is one of his required off-site improvements. So today, there's basically a left turn to get on to Nolansville and a right turn to get on to Nolansville. In the future, that will be widened where we can turn double lefts to head north onto Nolansville and a dedicated right turn to turn right to head south towards I-440. And that, that construction will start this summer. I'm sorry, this fall. And then finally, some of the Speedway and plan improvements. An enhanced infield. If you've been on the back straightaway, you know that there's some topography on what I'll call the backside of the Speedway. That, what I'll call paved area will be improved by 50%, which will help for parking opportunities for non-Speedway events and will also help as the Speedway increases in the use for the actual infield as well. A turn three tunnel, which will provide access directly to this facility, and I'm having to learn the numbers of the turns, but that's essentially that turn that sits right here. So there'll be a new tunnel that'll be built underneath the Speedway and it will replace the old, really small, tight tunnel under turn two. In addition to that, there will be an infield crossover entrance built in turn four, and that will be on what I'll call the northeast corner of the Speedway. That will replace where the current crossover exists in turn one. And we'll have an image to show what, what that looks like as well. And then finally, it's been mentioned before, but a Speedway alley to kind of have a pedestrian interface between the Speedway grandstand and a completed mixed-use parcel 8C will be as part of the Speedway improvement plans. So what are the keys to having a successful TMP? And I want to hit on this first one because I know it's a hot button. Maximize the on-campus parking. No stall should be unused if available on this campus when we're going to park for a special event. That's whether that be Speedway, soccer, or October flea market. Let's make sure we maximize all the parking that we have on this campus. And in addition to that, let's, let's do a good job of maximizing our off-site parking abilities in and around the actual fairgrounds. And that involves putting together a sort of a no before you go plan so that fans can get on a website and whether it be a parking spot on this campus or a parking spot that an entrepreneur is doing outside of anything happening with the fairgrounds or Speedway. Let's make sure there are many opportunities for folks to know what's available as an option in and around this campus. So promote those third-party parking options and have that available on a website that's viable. I'd also say, ride share, I mentioned that earlier, ride share continues to increase in urban markets and let's make the best use of that as well. Bristol Motorways shared this information with us here. 87% of the folks who visit a NASCAR event at the Las Vegas Motor Speedway are out of town. Now, some of those folks get rental cars and some of those folks rely on ride share. And we all know that Nashville is very much a tourist town. It's not exactly the same as Las Vegas, but I can certainly envision that we'll have a pretty aggressive out-of-town clientele in terms of fans wanting to come to a NASCAR event. Partner with the transportation network companies. Uber and Lyft are two viable DNCs where you can partner with them and help put together a game plan so that they can share with their drivers, where is the pickup and drop off so that we benefit in the mobility and the connectivity on this campus to get them in and out in a viable manner. And then I mentioned earlier, signage and ample sidewalk network so you can handle the pickup and drop off as well. I think it goes without saying, but anticipate and understand where we think we might have pedestrian vehicular conflicts and let's do what we can to minimize how those happen. And then finally, Metro Nashville's Police Department has a robust special events team. We've worked with them on multiple occasions this past year. They are a good partner. They will work with us. They worked with us both pre-event and post-event to look for ways to improve the plan. And I would say getting them involved early and often will be a pathway for success as well. Next slide. All right, I will quit showing you words on a slide and we'll show you a few images. Of course, this is a recent aerial drone image of Benton Avenue. You can see the mixed-use development there on the right with that parking garage coming out of the air. This was probably a December photo. You can see the current Speedway as it sits today. At the, where Benton Avenue basically ties into Wedgwood, there'll be additional infrastructure built there tied to the Speedway. Next slide, please. And then here's sort of an artist's rendition of what the Speedway might look like in the future. And I'll just point out, you know, I mentioned that infield vehicular access, you know, as you're coming down Wedgwood and you hang a left turn to go up Benton. And when we designed both Wedgwood and Benton, we put turning movement templates on the street to make sure we could handle truck traffic and that's tractor-trailer traffic can make that movement and get up and get access to that turn. Obviously, you see the, the larger tunnel there that gives us access to the Expo Center and then you can see sort of an artist's rendition of sort of an increased laid-out area for parking and other Speedway events within the infield. Next slide, please. And this is what the corner of Benton Avenue and Wedgwood Avenue Extension could look like from an artist's rendition. You can see that that's a three-story building, the sidewalks and the grandstand in the background. That's basically looking towards turn four. And then finally, on the last slide, Laura, this is again, just a rendering of what the Nashville Speedway Plaza could look like between mixed-use parcel 8C and an improved grandstand for the Speedway. And that takes us to our last slide. I would, at this point, you know, certainly entertain discussions and questions you may have with the caveat of this is an outline. We don't have all the answers yet, but this is sort of our game plan for what we will be looking to do with this project.
Do any commissioners besides me have questions? Do you want to start?
Okay. When you made a note here about addressing all event scenarios, I didn't see anything here that was specific to if it's coincident with any other activities going on, on the fairgrounds property.
Right.
And we do have some that are going to be happening at the same time. My assumption is that we'll have that addressed.
Absolutely. I think we, if we've got, you know, if we've got two events on this campus, we certainly want to make sure we're figuring out where they need parking and where their ingress and egress is coming from. Yes.
I think something too that I didn't hear, and it may be, you know, preliminary for me to be asking this, but I think it's important that we are mindful of the fact that these things need to be addressed ahead of time and not the week before. And I think that the community, the other users of the property need to be aware of what that timeline is going to look like and what that process will be in advance and having engagement with the community, you know, should this go through.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know how many spaces are going to be allocated in the mixed-use structure?
I've seen a range, but I think I'd feel more comfortable that the mixed-use developer would answer that. But we've worked off of ranges in the past.
Okay, we'll get that. We'll get that. Okay, Commissioner Hartley.
Thank you so much for this presentation. It's been a good overview. I would, I would echo, and this isn't directed at you, Chris, but I would echo Mario's note from our last work session, which it's difficult to formulate the best questions when we don't have these types of decks or presentations in advance. So I'm going to say I'm going to have some additional questions. I'm sure the other commissioners will have additional questions after today. But we have a couple of quick ones here. First, Chris, do you mind if I call you Chris? Is that okay?
Say that.
Are you okay if I call you Chris?
Absolutely.
Awesome.
I've been called worse.
We, we have, by the way, we have plates down here and no one can see them, so we're just looking at each other's names. It's kind of funny. Chris, your company, I know, is a, is a, is a large engineering traffic firm here, here in Nashville, I think. Do you guys have experience or have you prepared traffic plans in the past for other NASCAR or racing events?
Lots of sporting venues. One that comes to mind is Circuit of the Americas in Austin. We did college football championship in Atlanta. We've done Atlanta FC. We did the Braves. We did the last Super Bowl in Atlanta. We did the Las Vegas Raiders. Those are just the few that come off the top of my head that are more recent.
And the reason I ask that is, this is very congruent and obviously complimentary to what the plan was for soccer, but one question is, did we survey or do research into the average NASCAR fan and how their behavior might be different than the fan of a football or a baseball or a soccer fan, given other examples you just referenced? What I'm getting at is, are they more likely, less likely to park on campus or want to park on campus? Are they more likely or less likely to want an oversized vehicle available? If we build this facility, we want to make it attractive to the consumers that are coming to use it because we obviously get paid the same way Bristol does. But have we considered that in our traffic and parking plan, whether the consumer that we're building for has been adequately considered?
So to answer your question, that has not yet been considered, but it certainly is part of, I mean, I envision us having a listening session with Bristol Motor Speedway. They have a number of facilities that they operate, maintain for NASCAR events throughout the U.S. So I think we certainly want to learn, you know, just the amount of time a race fan may spend on campus compared with maybe a MLS soccer fan. I can imagine that being different just because of the length of the actual event itself. So yeah, I think there's definitely some things to learn on the front end to help us formulate that plan.
One technical question, I couldn't tell this from the renderings, and this might be a question, and I'll definitely ask Norm tomorrow because we're going to have coffee together and he's, knows a lot about racing and more than I do. Is parking on the infield during a NASCAR event something that's available or is that more for the consumer or is that more for use by the, by the racers and their teams? And the reason I'm asking is I'm just trying to sort of envision in my mind what the available parking assets on campus are, whether that infield is available or whether that's going to be taken up by the participants in the sport.
I would imagine the majority of that parking would be taken up by the folks that are actually participating and running and maintaining the race.
Thank you. My last question, Sheri, and then I'd love to hear if anybody else has any questions on traffic and parking right now is, and this may be more for you, Tom. You know, this is, this is a good plan. Can you, who is responsible both for, I mean, there's a lot of good activities in here. Who's responsible for doing these activities and making sure they're done, both in the practical, what we expect, and also what are the governing documents? What do they say as far as who's responsible for these actions?
I am not 100% sure I understood your question, but at the end of the day, the fair board staff is going to be mostly responsible for administering the contracts during the period of development while the structure is under construction. They will have a lot of help from my office and from the mayor's office and from others to make sure that the facility is designed and built as expected. But once the facility is built and the lease is, comes into effect, it's mostly going to be the fair board staff who are going to have to address, you know, parking problems and conflicts problems. And of course, we're not going to swim away from them. We'll help them resolve them too, but they're going to be the ones getting the frontline complaints.
Got you. And I think I didn't, I wasn't super clear. And I guess one thing for us to remember is that Bristol is not leasing the parking lots except for the significant event week. And assuming during the significant event week, we would expect Bristol to sort of manage the parking or at least work collaboratively with the fair board or fairground staff. But for the other events, it's in sort of envisioned that we would be either leasing those assets to Bristol or helping them manage their fans. I'm just trying to understand sort of where the delineation of responsibility is.
Correct. For, for the significant event weeks, I'd assume Bristol's going to want to manage them because there's a lot of revenue associated with the parking lots for those events. The other events are smaller and the fair board has control of the rest of the campus during those events. And I assume there will be opportunities for, for the fair board staff to control the parking and there may be revenue opportunities for them as well.
I think that's something for us to think about. I mean, a lot of this is, it's not just hard assets. It's a communication plan. It's consumer behavior that I don't think our staff is, at least today, not expert in. I will note that in the lease section 2E talks about parking and transportation and it talks about the anticipation that the parties anticipate a joint development of a parking ingress and egress plan for use during Speedway events. This may or may not be feasible, but to me, it makes more sense to have that plan agreed to before we sign the lease or at least have it attached as an exhibit to the lease. The reason for that is, you know, I'm concerned that we might be left on the hook dealing with the parking and traffic sort of outgrowth. Obviously, we all get paid in the same way in the sense of when more people come to the Speedway, we're, we're making more money as well as Bristol. But we have not completely aligned incentives with Bristol in this situation because we obviously have to operate this as a, an asset for the community as well. So for me, I'm wondering if we shouldn't ask to have that parking and traffic plan completed and a, and sort of executed as part of a suite of documents? That may not be a question, but I'm happy to hear anyone's response.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Yes, I would like to echo that as well because as we've seen with soccer, you know, we were told or persons before were told that there was a plan, but being someone who's experienced it, I can't tell. And all we keep hearing is that it's getting better. But there is, there was no concrete plan put in place before and I would actually like for us to avoid that now. We know that parking is a problem. I think what, I think I've been told that there is approximately 5,000 parking spaces currently available in, but we have a 30,000-seat soccer stadium with over 20,000 tickets sold. We cannot rely on ride share. We cannot rely on, you know, on people parking in folks' yards so that they can make a quick buck because there's liability issues there. I know you said that there's plans for ride share on Craighead, but I believe we are also building a transportation hub on this corner. Like, has there been any thought of maybe this transportation hub being a one-stop for transportation? So if the, you know, along with buses, can a car, can ride share pull up in there so that way they are not in the right of way of traffic and not having to worry about people blocking traffic in order to wait for their ride share clients? It's just a thought. Has that, was that contemplated?
Yeah, to answer your ride share question, to have a viable ride share for a stadium or a Speedway that's going to hold 30,000 people, you need hundreds of feet of sidewalk frontage. So the section out on Nolansville, that, that road carries 30,000 cars per day. So we selected Craighead because it's not quote unquote "an arterial throughput" and we had a lot of excess laneage to work with. The, the one thing that was lacking in year one for soccer events was we didn't have a sidewalk network that made that viable. And it's just a function of funds being available to build infrastructure. But with NDOT building sidewalks this calendar year, I think you'll see a much improved ride share operation. And it gets it off of Nolansville, which is a major thoroughfare.
And then has there been conversations with WIGO? I mean, we have three lanes coming in and out of Nolansville. Has there been any discussions of maybe creating some type of express lane, bus, express bus lane traffic coming in and out of downtown to move people, you know, here to this property?
So WIGO certainly has plans to improve bus service on a number of the corridors, but keep in mind, I don't think they can legally make it just specific for a Speedway or soccer or a flea market event. So it would have to be their typical schedule that runs throughout the week or the weekend per se.
So there's been no conversations as to how we can improve the flow of traffic when we have large-scale events here on property?
I don't think they have the ability to alter their services specifically for a, a private event per se.
So is there any way we can get an answer to that?
This is John Cooper with Waller. When I was law director for the city, we went through this with MTA specifically when this, when the stadium was, was being contemplated. The FTA will not allow bus services that receive federal funding to have bus lines for specific events or specific places. For example, schools, they can't, they're not allowed to have a MLK bus. It has to be part of a regular route that runs daily. So that, that's just a, I've had multiple conversations with Steve Bland, with WIGO about that, and there's just not any flexibility to get around that aspect.
If it's impossible, I would like to have a conversation with WIGO if possible because, I mean, I do believe that there's always some type of workaround that's something that we can do. It may not have to be just specific to this route, but I do know that bus systems can alter and make accommodations as they do for holidays, for all types of other causes. And, and so I just can't, I can't fathom that in that they would not take a look at because, I mean, and it's not just for massive events, it's just the flow of traffic. We have a traffic problem in the city. So, you know, I mean, this also could be helpful, helpful for people who may want to park here and commute into downtown once we fully reopen into the city instead of sitting on the street. Like, we could make money off of parking outside of events if we thought about it carefully enough and long enough, you know, so we could, you know, so it's a, I just think that we need to think about the big, think about it a little bit larger than the small boxes that we're currently in.
Mr. Cooper.
If I could also point out that, well, obviously, this is a 30-year agreement and so whatever plan we come up with today will, I mean, there'll have to be flexibility to alter it throughout the, the duration of the lease. So I don't think we'll get a one-size-fits-all for the entire agreement. I think it would, we'd have to have the flexibility built in to make changes as technology changes and patterns change.
And also, I'd like to see them stipulate criteria upon which we make the decision to make those changes and, and potentially list the different issues that we see globally in the area. And I believe Commissioner Avila has a question.
Thank you. Chris, thanks for the presentation. Just to clarify, so AC parking garage, that's what looks like an A but is actually C, right? The housing, so right behind it.
I didn't catch exactly what you were pointing to.
So your additional on-campus parking, mixed-use parcel 8C.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that's what looks like A on the image, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, and then I think I heard you say this, but is there going to be some additional parking outside of, outside of the, one of the turns? I thought I heard you say that there was going to be additional parking.
No, they will improve the infield paved area.
Okay.
Which will benefit other fairgrounds events.
Okay. That's what I'm thinking. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, we may ask you back.
Fair enough.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you as well.
I am going to ask that we divert our attention back to our minutes that I forgot to get approved. So I would like to entertain a motion to approve our work session minutes of December 21st.
Chair, I move that we accept the minutes from the last previous work session.
Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Given that we have two seconds, I'll call for the vote. On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. I am an aye and we will move on to our question and answer session. What we are going to do at this point is take our list of questions and I'm going to turn the floor over to Laura and I'm going to let her guide our conversation of the questions. We don't need to read through each one line by line, but I'd like to open up the opportunity for us to have that conversation as it relates to each of these questions. So with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Laura.
All right, thank you. So what you have in front of you for, to guide the conversation is I've tried to keep a comprehensive list of all the questions that I've received so far from commissioners. There are a few questions on page four that you will not see answers to yet, but I did want to include them so you knew what questions were pending. And then I'm continuing to work with both Bristol and administration and legal to get those answered for you. And so this will be kind of a working document and updated as we get the questions answered. So I think it's important, the chair and I talked about, you know, if, if you, if the commissioners have questions, certainly the public will have similar questions and, and then ultimately council may have the same questions as well. So if we could kind of go through these, again, I don't need to read them all, but if there is something that you'd like but if there is something that you'd like some additional clarification on, we can talk about that as part of this work session, which is kind of the point. So we've got everybody here that is, was actively answering some of these questions. So one of the first ones, you know, and we can kind of zip through this depending on how much time you want to spend. But the first question was, you know, who is the customer and who will be coming to the Speedway under this proposal? You kind of heard from Chris a little bit about the research as far as out-of-town versus local. Certainly, that would be more for the NASCAR race rather than local racing. That conversation is a little bit different. I'm sure those numbers are reflective of that. But there's also information contained in the CSL report.
Laura, one thing, could you actually do this? Could you, before you go through the specifics, can you just walk through how you, where you distribute these to, who provided input into these? So we can know where the answers come from. I'm assuming it's from Tom and John, but I would love to say that out loud.
Yes, so all of the questions that you have in front of you, in front of you are from the five of you, the five commissioners, and maybe one or two for myself if I didn't see them addressed. But a lot of mine were repetitive, so I kept mine off. So they were submitted to Bristol and to administration with Ben and to Metro Legal as well. So Tom, John, and Ben.
We also had the input from the Bristol team. It wasn't just me answering, but we coordinated with them.
I think this is an important one. One of the questions is regarding curfew and noise. And will NCBC be held to the same curfew and noise standards as Bristol and the other tenants? And the answer is yes. Kind of a simple, simple answer to that. We talked a little bit about that in the last work session as well. Another question was something that was missing that we had identified early in the lease was mandating participation in the Neighborhood Impact Advisory Committee. This is something that the other campus partners have participated in since, you know, they joined our campus. So yeah, Bristol has always said that they would be very willing to participate and have been in the meetings, some meetings up until this point.
Laura, would you, would you go to number six as you're going down the list?
Sure.
And I just want you to speak to the conversations that we have had with the different parties in so far as managing potential vendor conflict.
Did you have a question?
I had one more procedural question, which was, we're sort of finishing up our, or we're kind of in the middle of our information gathering phase. I know we're still waiting on some information that we've requested. As we move into sort of our list of asks, I just want to know, like, we should, I don't want to lose some of these great points that everyone's kind of come to an agreement on somewhere. So I guess the question is just like, where, who's taking notes? It's a simple question, and how do those get into the deal?
I can answer that. What we're doing, Laura and I, are taking a compilation of all of the data, all of the questions and comments that have been presented to us. Christie's doing an awesome job of keeping notes for us that we have an actual list of everything that has been presented. And we're going to put that together in a document that will be shared with the vice mayor so he can present it to the Metro Council as well as to this body so that we have what we need in order to make the decision that we're going to make when we bring to vote. So if you have anything that you think of actually when you're at home, when you're studying this, wherever you are, if you want to either shoot, well, probably should shoot Laura, what your comments are and what things you would like to see us address, certainly go ahead and give that to us. And I think we sent that out in an email, excuse me, not too long ago. So let's, does that answer your question?
It does, or it's on the track of it, which is obviously if we have asks, we want to compile the list. But I'm also making sure that when we get those agreements back, like for here, Bristol has said they'll participate tonight. So we need to make that a provision of the lease, you know, or the operating agreement. So that's what I'm looking for is when we reach those agreements, let's not undo the great work that everyone in this room has sat around and agreed on things. Let's make sure those get in. And I'm sure Tom has a plan for that, obviously. He's got to revise the documents, but we want to just make sure we make his job easy to give him a good list of those agreements.
You might consider it a checklist of things to look for, to make sure they're there.
Okay, I'm going to skip to number six. One of the-
Hang on, Laura, Tom.
I'd just like to make an observation. I'm sure it's obvious to you, but you all need to agree on what things you're going to ask for to be put in the lease. So yeah, we really do appreciate the work that you're doing in helping to come up with questions for us to respond to and things that you would like to see changed. But at some point, we need to, we need to vote on those things that you want to see put in the, in the lease.
Trust me, I have that on my list.
I have my list, and you have your list, and Jasper has his list, so. Agreed, Tom, that's a good point.
Mario, do you have your list? Okay, are there any other comments so far about what we've discussed? I'm going to turn it back over to Laura.
All right. One of, there's been a couple of questions about scheduling protocols. And so what we have done so far, Sheri and I have sat down with our campus partners to come up with a more defined protocol on, you know, we're already doing this with our soccer partners as far as how we go about coordinating schedules and who needs what for their events that they're hosting, who's going to be using what lot during what day. And so that is already happening. So what we've done is kind of reduced that process to writing and then brought Bristol to the table as well as mixed use and market street representation so that we could all agree on that protocol. You know, always the big question is, what if three major events want scheduling on the same day, you know? And so that's always the elephant in the room question on how we do that. And so we've kind of reduced that again to writing to come up with a methodology on how to determine, you know, essentially who has dibs. I claim dibs for the fairgrounds, of course, for our events. And then certainly there is timing considerations and notification of when events can be put on the schedule, how long they can stay on the schedule before they are finalized and in a kind of a holding pattern until things are finalized. But those are the types of things that we're working out. And I think we're 95% there on all agreeing on this scheduling protocol. So we'll definitely get that out to you once it's finalized, official.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Oh, one thing on this. Tom, I have written down that I'm waiting on a scheduling declaration. Is there, is it already contemplated to have a scheduling protocol in the lease? And if not, I'm going to echo what I said in parking and traffic, which is, I think it's great that the parties plan to agree. And I agree with John's comment earlier that we have to anticipate a 30-year agreement. So we need to agree on how to change an agreement. But I think having at least the initial scheduling protocol attached as an exhibit to the lease, signed and agreed to ahead of time, is going to serve us well. Because if we get past and into operating, we're going to, we're not going to have a lot less leverage to reach an agreement.
John, do you want to speak to that? Or Tom?
Laura and representatives of Bristol and the soccer team have done most of the work on that. We have seen some drafts. I believe it is contemplated to be an exhibit to, I guess it is the lease.
The floor is yours, Laura.
All righty, let's go back to number four. Question was, do project accounts as defined mean that BMS only contributes if the authority contribution and the state contribution are insufficient to support completion of the product, of the project? That sounds very legalese, and so I'm going to turn that one over to Mr. Cross or Mr. Cooper.
That is basically a correct summary. If, there are a lot of moving parts here. One of the things we talked about at previous work sessions is we're not going to know some things until Bristol comes back with a GMP. And at that point, we should know whether, the sum of the state grant and what's left of the CDC grant after paying for pre-construction services, what is the gap between the GMP and that total? If Metro can bond that amount with revenue sources that we've talked about that are projected in this CSL report, then Bristol wouldn't, wouldn't need to contribute to the project. If there's going to be a deficiency, then they have a decision to make about whether they want to contribute and go ahead or not contribute, and then we would terminate the process.
John?
I would also note that Bristol's contribution is kind of throughout the lease in the form of rent and revenue sharing. And so it's, you know, they're paying in to service the debt, you know, on the facility.
All right, so in the lease, it does talk about requisite capacity of the grandstands and the Speedway structure. And that, so the question was, does the requisite capacity mean the state mandated 30,000? And where that comes from is in order to comply with state law so that you could be eligible for ticket tax. So just like the soccer stadium, it has to be 30,000 seats. So that's kind of where that number came from.
So if you don't mind, I would like, because there's been a lot of questions, you know, about, you know, do we need a Speedway this large? Can we just renovate the existing facility? Could you explain to like why it is important? And what will, what will happen if we are not able to collect this ticket tax if we do not have a 30,000-seat facility?
John?
Oh, there you go. So the pro forma for the facility, for the improvements, one of the key aspects of that is the ticket tax. And in order, under state law, to collect the ticket tax, the facility has to be 30,000 seats. So that's, again, like Laura said, that came up when we were doing soccer because originally I think they were looking at maybe doing a little bit less than that. And it had to be that level in order to charge a ticket tax.
So what does that mean, collecting the ticket tax? Like, for the average, for the citizens, for the people that are watching that have questions and concerns as to why do we need this? Like, how detriment, like, what will we be missing? A million dollars a year, $2 million a year?
I don't know what the number is off the top of my head. I think it's 1.2 in the new pro forma for the first year. And I'll expand on that. I mean, what I'm seeing, Jasper, I'm seeing in the pro forma to show sort of what the expected revenues would be that we're then using to sort of go out to market and get the bonds to finance the construction. The ticket tax revenue in the first year is estimated at 1.2 million. So another way to answer your question is if we don't do it, I think, and Tom and John, Cross, check me on this, if we don't do a 30,000-seat facility, we're not able, under state law, to take that ticket tax. So then this pro forma frankly doesn't work without a 30,000-seat stadium because that's almost one-third, one-fourth of the revenue. Well stated.
And then what's the alternative to a 30,000-seat?
I would assume that you'd have the option to do whatever size you wanted, but Todd is correct that we would not be able to make the bond payment that we're anticipating without that. That's a major source of the revenue. And it's just a quirk of state law that 30,000 seats happens to be the threshold. So we would have to go back to the drawing board without it.
Jasper, one more note on that, and I think Sheri's going to, or she may mention it later. But one thing I've asked for in questions that we're still waiting on, and it takes a while to put it together, but what an alternative proposal would be. Obviously, we know in the general obligation budget, there is a line item for fairgrounds improvements or Speedway improvements. I don't want to speak wrong if I get that wrong. But, you know, with that, that would be a different, that would be a different level of debt. So we might not need the ticket tax for that. But we don't know yet because we don't have that sort of work of what those costs would be and what, you know, what the proposal would be.
In terms of the report that we're waiting for that you've referenced, if the Bristol proposal were to fail, we've asked, what is our obligation insofar as safety and upgrading the facility so that it's consistent with what needs to happen in a 2023 and forward property? Having said that, if we have to do that, the funds come from a different bucket of money that more directly impact the taxpayer because it's general obligation money. So we're just waiting for that, for that number and to exactly find out what the engineers think about the status of the property.
So the next question had to deal with the CSL cost study that we reviewed in the last work session. And the question was, was consideration given if there were no sanctioning agreement with NASCAR? Are there other tracks that don't have sanctioning agreements? And what do those cost analysis reflect? And essentially, I don't know really how to summarize this. It's literally one sentence, but it says, "The revenue projections in the report are based on that assumption that renovated Speedway will receive the NASCAR sanctioning agreement." So there is an assumption there. And it will be necessary in order for the facility to host the events, the renovations.
John, do you want to speak at all to the process of NASCAR sanctioning and what other properties they have that are already sanctioned? Or is Jerry here?
Okay, we can come back to that.
Yeah, we'll come back.
I did, I did want to add one thing, not to speak over you, Sheri and John, but we do need to remember if NASCAR does, or excuse me, if Bristol does not procure a NASCAR event, then they have agreed to pay additional rent to make up the gap. So that's an important thing to add to this answer is we're not like in the hole a million dollars. There's a, it's section 3C-ish in the, in the operating agreement that talks about that. So, you know, we do get made whole, or not made whole, we get made, I'd say Bristol would say made whole, but we'd say hopefully made whole in that situation.
John?
And there's also a parent guarantee that would kick in if Bristol, for some reason, failed to meet that obligation. So there are multiple checks and balances to ensure that Metro is protected. At least, I think so.
Laura?
There was a clarification asked for in the agreement, again, to Todd, to your point about keeping, kind of keeping track of clarifications or additions that we have in that the sound study should be characterized as up to a 50% reduction in the perception of sound. So that was agreed that, you know, that terminology, I think the definition is important in this situation, especially to our chair, that we say that correctly.
Guess whose question that was?
I'm sorry, you're asking for a clarification that there be a, there's nothing? I don't believe there's anything in the-
It's not in the lease. It's just, it's part of the, I think, the public education as well as ours is that when they're talking in the sound study about the impacts of the mitigation, that it is a perception of loudness, not actual, like, a defined decimal limit, a measurement. Right, it's a perception of loudness. The question was, is another material other than metal being considered for the grandstands to reduce reverberation? Again, this has to do with trying to mitigate sound. And I think that is something that we've talked about that will be more clearly defined when it, when we go through the design and costing of the project.
And the chair and the director will be involved- And the chair and the director will be involved directly with that, with that process.
I do have one general point, since these are both on noise reduction, and I think we should all note that, you know, the section on noise mitigation, which is section 10C3, I mean, it's not negotiated yet. I mean, the term is open. Unless I have an old version of the agreement, we need to actively say what we think the amount of sound mitigation should be. So I think that's something for us to put on our list of things we should agree to as an amendment because it certainly won't be left open. I think everybody contemplated that, but, you know, right now, you know, it's for us to propose, I guess.
Exactly.
Question was, didn't Bristol's rent increase to $1 million instead of 850? And the answer was yes. This was an adjustment in the financial pro forma and the terms of the lease based on the CSL financial report. So there were several changes, and that was one of them, was the increase in annual rent paid by Bristol. I know there's probably another question on this, because I think, Todd, you had asked about this as well. There's a similar question later on in the documentation, but is Bristol not responsible for all capital repairs and improvements to the speedway throughout the lease term? Why, why don't? I think maybe I cut and pasted weird. Why don't we, why do we not have a collaborative review and procurement plan with Metro relative to the needs, timelines, and implementation? So this kind of has to go to the waterfall and the funding of the capital reserve?
There's another question, several pages down, that sort of relates to this, and we can go through the whole process for how the capital repairs and capital improvements works. But one of the stops in the waterfall is to a capital reserve fund to help pay for repairs that need to be done, and to the extent there is enough money in that fund, after the Fair Board has determined that repairs have been made or there's a reserve, adequate reserve for them, then it can also be used for capital improvements. So repairs are things, capital repairs are things done to the product as it starts day one of the lease, and capital improvements are things that might be desirable to have later. So the fund is intended primarily for repairs to the facilities as it exists on the first day of the lease, but under some circumstances, it could also be used for capital improvements as well. To the extent that there's not enough money in that fund, then Bristol is on the hook for it. What our main check to make sure that they are complying with the required standard in the lease is every five years, the board can require that they engage an engineer to prepare a capital asset maintenance plan or management plan that reviews the facility, the work that's been done, and does a five- and 10-year look ahead on work that's going to need to be done to keep it up to the facility standard. They are required to do the parts of that plan that are necessary to comply with a facility standard, which is essentially keeping it in a good condition and in the same condition as comparable facilities, facilities of similar size and age. So we threw that pretty fast, and we can, we can do more of that. This is one of those questions where there was a little bit more specific question asked later on in the second match, and we are proposing to give you a written summary of like a paragraph that might be a little bit easier to follow.
I think that's a great summary, Tom. I guess that's my question. The only, I love a summary, but I think that was really good. The amount in the waterfall, what directs how much is in the capital, that line of the waterfall?
It's half a percent.
So it's like a number in the lease? It's not sort of a, there's no optionality by either party about how much goes in there? It's just a percentage in the lease?
It's half, it's on page, this is section nine of the lease, and it's capital projects fund in the amount of one-half of the percent of the net construction cost, which is a fine term, basically the hard construction cost of the initial facility. So half a percent of that.
And if it's not sufficient, Bristol is responsible for the overage, so they would be responsible to keep it up to a level comparable to similar facilities if it's not sufficient?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you. This next question is somewhat related to the ticket tax question regarding what if it doesn't live up to the revenue projections? And so was consideration given to weather and other potential reasons that ticket sales may not live up to expectations as it relates to replacement reserve fund? And so this also relates to the waterfall and the debt reserve fund, and my understanding is that CSL absolutely used, considered impacting events such as weather in their The agreement notes that Metro is responsible for construction of the speedway, isn't Bristol? So Bristol is required to engage in a design builder to design and construct the new speedway. There is a, I don't know if it's called Development Speedway Oversight Committee, I believe it's called, in the development agreement, and these are members, it would be the executive director, the Fair Board Chair, and the finance director or a designee to represent Metro to oversee the development of the speedway and to participate and to collaborate with Bristol on that process. So it's not fully independent of Metro oversight? There's a couple of questions about the payment to the fairgrounds and why isn't the, what, why isn't the payment to the fairgrounds guaranteed upfront in whole versus a partial guarantee and the other half in the waterfall?
Tom, you want to address that?
That's a negotiated term, but in my notes last time, I believe the chair was interested in pursuing an amendment relating to that. Where we landed in the negotiation, and of course, you don't get everything you ask for in any negotiation, was that part of it would be made guaranteed, and part of it would be dependent on the sufficiency of the waterfall to fund it.
It's on the list.
So to further clarify, where that number came from is looking at the revenue that we were generating from the track, not just for races, but for all events that we have used the track for, and then subtracted out the expenses, because there is an expense avoidance in this proposal because we would be not having to pay the electric bill and the water bill and all these things that would then transfer over to Bristol. So we backed that out. And so the resultant number was what we were working with. So 50% of that, you know, is guaranteed and 50% is captured in the waterfall.
Well, and to that point, we also want to take a look at that updated with the updated numbers to make sure that it's still consistent. So that's what we're in the process of doing it.
One, Laura, not to jump ahead, but, you know, one of my questions was, where can we look at economizing our overall operational costs because we'd be outsourcing this part of the fairgrounds? Obviously, we looked at the revenue, the current financials during our last session, which was an hour ago, and I think we should, I'll just say, I wasn't fully satisfied with the answer. I feel like we should really evaluate what potential cost savings we have if we don't have to operate the fairground speedway. I mean, that should be a savings that's, that's real and that should reduce that. Again, that subsidy from the city, so we don't have, again, that is another impact on the general fund. So obviously, that's, we would need to give you some direction on what we would like to do there, but I think we should really evaluate what's going to happen if we outsource that. It's not just going to be electric costs, there's going to be potential cost savings. We won't know that today, and I'm not asking for anything today, I just think we should, we should think about that.
I have the expense calculations that we provided to CSL, so I can give you that. From a staffing standpoint, we have right now 16 full-time people that keep this place running from 6:00 AM to midnight, seven days a week. So it's not a big staff, nor do I see that reducing at all. We just need to refocus to a more detailed, we're going to be, yes, we won't have as much to do, but I will tell you that in our current lease with our promoter, with Bob, they're responsible for a lot of the day-to-day. They're the ones cleaning the bathrooms, they're the ones that are mowing the grass. So we're not doing that right now anyway. So as far as some things like working on the scoreboard, you know, helping get PA up and running before the season, checking all the lights, that is us, so that won't be on our plate anymore. But trust me, there's enough to do around here that I don't see any staffing reductions from that side if we look at staff and pure expense.
I think that's a really, that helps me a lot to hear that sort of that evaluation has been thought through. I do think, still think we should macro think about what outsourcing a large part of the campus will do and sort of revisit that, but I think obviously you've thought a lot about it, so we should just continue to think about it.
Regarding the agreement and the tourism agreement with the Nashville Convention and Visitors Corp., do they have rights to any part of the fairgrounds beyond the speedway? And simply, the CDC will have the right to use only the speedway and associated structures specifically covered by the lease? If they want to expand, if they have an event that they want to bring in that would expand beyond those lease footprints, then they would come and negotiate separately with the fairgrounds?
I'm sorry, I'm just going to ask a question after every question. Yes, I apologize.
That's what we're here for.
You know, when we're, this is from the traffic study, you know, there are buildings on, I just want to make sure I understand what the speedway part of the campus is when we're, so we're all talking about the same thing. I'm understanding, and Tom told me to disagree, and John too, I'm understanding that sort of, when Bristol and CDC get the speedway, they would get like this building, you know, all the sort of improvements around the oval. Is that everybody's understanding of what we're talking about?
Yes.
The oval, the grandstands, and all of the new buildings that you see there.
Thank you.
If Bristol is not contractually obligated under the proposed lease agreement to bring any event to the speedway fairground or fairgrounds, nor can they guarantee that NASCAR will continue to allocate races to Bristol, nor is there a sanctioning agreement, should this be cause for concern such as, such that Nashville taxpayers won't be responsible for the debt?
Tom?
That's more of a policy question for the board to answer. You know, we, you have to determine for yourself whether that's cause for concern, but in the answer that we've given you, there are some protections built into the lease, one of them Todd mentioned earlier, that requires a sort of a make-whole payment in the event that they're, that they don't host NASCAR events. And it's also true that they're going to be motivated to, to host events to cover their costs as well. And presumably, they don't intend to go through with this and pay the costs that they're going to incur in not programming it.
All right, this is, this may have changed because the finances have changed a little bit from the original CSL report, but why are Bristol's revenue projections for advertising, sponsorship, and gross revenue sharing lower than the numbers shown and projected by CSL?
Well, the deal, the deal has changed just a little bit on this point, but I will say that there were a few places where CSL thought that Bristol was going to exceed their, what they had projected, and this happened to be one of them. There were, there were other places where they thought, well, you know, we don't, we don't think they're going to be able to actually host as many concerts as they had projected, and they, they projected slightly lower attendance at some of the, some of the events on the list. But in this particular instance, they thought that Bristol was likely to do better than they had projected. So that's the explanation for it.
Just on, Laura, what is the sort of ballpark cost of a ticket to a local race today?
$15 for adult, and then it goes down, there's military discounts, there's children discounts, he does special promotions for back-to-schools, so generally 12 to $15.
And.
Pit passes are different, I see Scott here, so he.
Well, that's enough, that's close enough what I'm getting at, and so I'm understanding that the CSL report, did I read correctly that they estimate a tripling? So is that accurate that it estimates a tripling of the ticketing cost? Is that what the report says? Okay, so I do want to go on a little tangent here for a second. We heard from a lot of the local racing community today, and I want to say that we should honor that, that expression. There's a large expression of interest in local racing. We obviously have a charter requirement that we do auto racing. My personal opinion is, and maybe Metro Legal agrees or don't agree, doesn't agree with me, but to me, when I see that charter amendment, that's, that's about local racing, that's not necessarily about NASCAR because that's, if you look at the background of the campaign, the man who organized that campaign was here. So one question that I have about this Bristol deal, because I'm a little concerned that we're going to build a major league stadium, and we're not going to be able to have neighborhood softball games in it. And what I mean by that is, does anything in this operating agreement require Bristol to host local races?
No, they're not, it doesn't require them to host any specific races, but again, the odds are they're going to want to program it, and they, you know, they're deeply enmeshed in the racing culture in places where they have other tracks, and they understand the importance of including local races in their, in their mix.
Well, that's what I expected, Tom, thank you. And I think something for us to think about, because we've heard from this community that that's important. We've even heard from some of the neighborhood leaders that they're, they also respect that as a use. You know, Bristol gets 10 weekends a year, and if there is pressure on them to drive revenue, which is also good for us because we want to make revenue as well, there's a concern I have that some of these local races could be replaced with larger types of racing events to make the revenue pencil. And I don't think that's fair to the local community and the local racers that are here. So I think we should consider whether we have to mandate or build into the lease a requirement that certain levels of races are protected. Because again, I think our charter requirement says auto racing means local racing. Those are the guys that led that campaign, and those are the guys, those are our constituents that are saying it's important. So again, this is a little tangent, I've been thinking about this for a long time, and I think it's important. So I would love everyone's comment on that, but I also think we should just think about it, because it's 10 race weekends. If we get, you know, bad weather and we get a bad revenue pencil, we might next year decide we have to cut a couple of those local races. And I don't think that's fair for the guys that have been here for a long time, or fair, you know, because those are, those are people that live around here that are wanting to use the facility.
John.
Well, I'll speak on behalf of Bristol that it has never been contemplated that there wouldn't be local racing. That's always been part of the discussion, and, you know, I think they intend to continue to partner with the current operator for the local racing aspect, but we don't have, I don't think they have any intention of stopping local racing.
And to clarify that, so the local, so any of the local races where we've had community members over and over come and talk about, those would fall under the umbrella of a racing weekend, correct?
That's correct.
So I think what would be helpful to me, because you bring up a really good point, Todd, that as I've taken notes from everyone that's been here and thinking about ticketing and also attendance, right? So we also, because that, our incentives are aligned, we want to get as many people into this facility as possible. What has Bristol done at other speedways to be able to do that? If there, regardless of their limits of potential racing, is local racing happening at other, at other properties? And to what level? Which would be helpful, again, as we think about supporting our local racers and the rest of the community. Are these local races happening? Are they equivalent to the racing that is currently happening at our speedway? And just to clarify, Todd, something that you said, I think it'll be important to understand, in our charter, is it racing or is it local racing? Because I was under the impression that it was just racing, auto racing.
I think it says auto racing.
Yeah, there's an implication.
Right, we should defer to Metro Legal to define that, but I'm just saying, me as a constituent, knowing that background, it sounds a lot more like. a constituent, knowing that background, it sounds a lot more like, you know, it's with, it's in align with flea market, it's in align with other local uses. So I just want to add one more thing on this, John. Obviously, this is contemplated in Bristol's plan, and we should probably, I mean, I know you probably are going to want to talk to Jerry and the team about this, but if it's contemplated as one of the uses, I mean, you know, why don't we, why don't we put it in the lease like that?
Well, I think what we're, you know, again, it's a 30-year lease, and so what we're trying to do is make sure that we have the flexibility to host different kinds of events that may evolve over time, and so we don't want to really box in a particular, you know, type or, or number of, of specific events in the lease. I mean, that just was not contemplated as we were going through the negotiation process.
Well, I will say that one specific type of event that we did include was a NASCAR event, and, you know, I understand that that's clearly important to the parties because it drives a lot of revenue on the site, but you have to understand that another very important part, and something for us to think about as a board, is that these guys come to every meeting and they talk about how important local racing is. If we don't turn around and say that's an important element for us, at least our side of the negotiation, that being the city, then we have not served our local racing community. So I think for me, that's just as important in some ways as a NASCAR event. And so within those 10 race weekends, I'm going to propose, I think, I haven't decided yet, but I think we should propose, some of those should be set aside for local racing.
It also ties to a comment earlier that I wanted to bring up. When we talk about scheduling, and something for us, as much as we're going to be able to discuss, there's a big difference between being a shareholder and being a stakeholder. And as a, as a metro property, I think that's something that we need to be considerate about, because this is a perfect example of where, when the, pun intended, rubber hits the road, we're going to have to have a real discussion about a local race and potential revenue that that brings in versus any other event on campus, and whether we're here to make money for our shareholders, right, being private entities on our campus, or our stakeholders who are our community. And that's a very different proposition. And so to our question around scheduling and our question around local racing versus NASCAR, I just want us to make sure that we understand the difference between the two, and what we're here to do in support of the community, because we've heard it on both sides. So I just want to, I just really want to hit that home, that we need to be thoughtful about the decisions on scheduling. We're not here to make money, obviously we're not, right, Sutres? So we're not making money. This is, hopefully, something like this proposal really helps, but I think we have to be thoughtful about what we're here to do.
All right, that's good discussion, thank you. The next question is, in part, repetitive, because we talked a little bit about the local ticket pricing compared to what it is currently and what that proposal is, but it also adds a justification of the projected increase, drastic increase in local racing attendance in consideration of tripling the ticket cost from what is currently charged. I'm going to kind of leave that open for like some discussion, because we talked about the ticket prices, what they are now at $12 to $15, and in the CSL report, they projected a $40 ticket price, along with it, an increase in attendance from what we have typically seen over the last several years.
John, do you want to address that?
This is actually the first I've heard about a tripling of the ticket price, so I'm not, not sure where that, that's coming from. In my discussions with Bristol, ticket prices have not, that hasn't come up at all. So we could have a discussion with them, but I'm, I just don't have enough information to answer that.
There was a reference to it in the CSL study.
Okay, so CSL made that assumption?
That's where it was.
So I answered 19.
Yeah, and in the discussion, I did, that's another one where I struggle with, right, what we hear from our community members, and having like my two kids come, I'm really hard-pressed to, regardless of age, pay $15 versus $40 to come see a local race, given attendance and expectation. So I think as, as our duty, both as fiduciaries and oversight over this campus, but also for the community is protecting that so that if this property is to be used by the community and the history of local racing, if we're at a minimum not putting that into a lease, whether we have to save some of those racing days for community races, then I think there has to be some consideration to a price threshold for attendance, whether it's your, you know, Davidson County resident or, you know, Tennessean coming onto this property, the ability to continue to come and enjoy local racing. And it's just something that I think we should really think through as well when we think about local racing and the implications of some of these, these numbers.
I will add that some of the discussion that I had with Bristol on the, this question in particular, both of an increased projected attendance as well as an increase in ticket prices, was also the experience. This is going to be a whole new facility. So the amenities, the entire fan experience is going to be so much more elevated, they're going to have more resources at their disposal, they're going to have, you know, new facilities and better facilities to, to do their sport that they love. So that also was anticipated as a driving factor to get more people to the track, is to experience all of the other supporting amenities that went into the redevelopment.
Let me also add that the average ticket price also includes some higher-priced areas. So the average isn't a finite number for all tickets, it's an average, as I understand it. We should get some more clarification over that.
I'll just reiterate though, to your point, Laura, that like, you know, my kid soccer team's not playing in Geodes, like, and not, that is a negative comparison. Obviously, local racing's a much higher level than, than that, but I'm concerned we're overbuilding the site for the people that want to use it, and we should really consider that, because I don't want them to become disenfranchised because we're pushed to drive revenue to make it pencil. I think it's very important for us to consider some of those race weekends. We need to have a strong check that the local racing community can still use the facility.
Question 20 is again, very similar about the disparity of a projected attendance, but one of the other things that Bristol brings to the table is their marketing expertise and getting that word out far and wide to, to recruit and to, you know, entice people to attend. Next question, is there enough buffer in the revenue streams to protect the general fund when there is weather, a pandemic, or if NASCAR, Bristol does, does, does come to a sanctioning agreement or lose it? So this is a similar question that we've answered earlier about the debt reserve fund in the waterfall. Is there any further explanation needed on that? Next question is, what is the remaining $13 million from the Nashville Convention and Visitors Corp. going towards? There is $4 million towards pre-development, and the remaining $13 million will be applied to the construction budget. So this was, again, one of the changes that was made after the original CSL report, so that more money was going to go up, go to the construction budget to reduce the overall What is the definition of substantive in regards to the use of procurement and competitive bidding? So this is from the development agreement discussion that we had, and the term was, if I recall, that they have to use Metro's competitive bidding process for substantive construction work, and so the question was, well, what does that mean? And that is hard construction, so the big trades, concrete, electrical, plumbing, mechanicals, site work, those types of construction categories. The lease document says that Bristol will not be under any obligation to provide parking for fairgrounds events. Is there a more cooperative approach to be taken here? And essentially, this is something that would be negotiated separately by all of us, and also as part of the scheduling protocol that we currently employ with soccer.
I'll just reiterate again, I think traffic, parking, and scheduling are things to negotiate now rather than later. I think the parties are all acting in good faith, but we would be remiss if we didn't use this point of leverage to lock in some of those. And to Sheri's point, also the process to make that work moving forward. To John's point, this is a long lease, but we can have an agreement of how to agree moving forward.
And those are things that are included and that we've had conversation about with all of the players on the property at this current time.
And I will say that this doesn't, I mean, they fully anticipate opening the Speedway to our use for, for fairgrounds events, so I want to make sure to add that.
Okay, we want to call on Commissioner Alba.
Yeah, it just, so I think additional, because that's another real tension point in the community, right, around parking, and we've talked about this. So I think some more clarity on it, and maybe you could just, let me tell you what I, what I hear, and let me know if I'm hearing that correctly. So major events that will be held at the Speedway, the Speedway will, if they have other parts of the campus, will control that and parking. In the event that there, the smaller events that are not, like kind of the 10-race weekends or others, we, our staff, would staff those parking facilities, right? And we would receive that revenue.
Bristol gets control of the Speedway and lots of other undesignated areas for these four major event weekends, and it's really more like three and a half the way things settle. For the other race weekends, they don't have control of those other areas, and that will be up to the Fair Board to decide how to handle that. But it strikes me, and I gather it does you, that there might be an opportunity there, both for managing things and also maybe for some revenue.
Yeah, and thank you. And so for other events, when we use facilities, I think that's part of what we have to discuss is, you know, for Geodes or the, the, the other fair events, if we're using their facilities, there's going to have to be some sort of, of payment or agreement made if we're parking cars on the Speedway as well.
They're going to control the Speedway 365. So if there's going to be parking in this, in the Speedway infield, that's going to have to be worked out with Bristol and whoever the user is.
This goes to my point, which is, you know, this is, this is something to be done now, not later, in my opinion. I think that's something we should, we should put a proposal forward. I mean, obviously Laura and Sheri are working on this, and I think that work stream you're doing is great. My only point is, let's agree to it and attach it into these governing documents before agreeing to the governing documents.
And I will say, it is similar to how our agreement with soccer is, from the standpoint that if we use, like I have made requests to use their Lot 9, for instance, and if they're not using it, freely give it to us, no, no problem. And we do this often, but in the event that, say, we want some space within the, in the stadium itself, which is similar to how this agreement is done, if we want space within there, we'll have to pay operational costs, maybe it's an extra security guard or something, but we get the use for free. But there is a nominal cost to utilizing each other's space if operationally there's an expense on their side.
And that's standard in all other Metro agreements for entertainment-type facilities?
All right, how will food and beverage work at the expos during significant event weeks as it relates to contracted vendor that will hold catering, beer permit, and liquor license? And in this agreement, Bristol will have the right to either use our existing vendor or use its own food and beverage vendor if it's different than ours. So from our perspective, this will be a consideration when we go out for RFP in 2024 for a new food and beverage provider. So we're going to have to carve out those weeks, and we do that already with other weeks. So for instance, the fair, when State Fair was here, we always carved out those 10 days in our food and beverage agreement, so we would have to do the same with this, and just be very clear in the scope of services for the food and beverage. Will the C V C be subject to fairgrounds parking fees if parking is needed outside the leased footprint? And the answer is, yes, it would take a separate agreement with the Fair Board, but yes, yes Very, kind of a broad question, why isn't the Bristol lease the same as the soccer lease?
John?
There are very, very different uses, first of all, different facilities. Soccer was a brand-new facility, this is an existing facility that is going to be greatly rehabilitated. There was also 10 acres of mixed-use development for free that was part of the soccer deal that made that pencil out, and we don't have a development deal as part of the Bristol deal. So they're just, they're separate, separate agreements, separate situations, circumstances.
Any comments, questions, discussion about that?
We have done other comparisons, I've given you a comparison, it's also posted on the website. There was a question about comparing the development agreements between soccer and our, the Bristol development agreement that is, has been presented to you, so there's a lot of similarities in that regard. So just note that that comparison is done as well.
I am going to offer number 30 forward. We don't have the answers to just yet.
Yeah, well, we're getting those.
And we're getting them. And I would propose that when we, do we have another question?
Um, there's just a few more that I can.
Well, there's 29, do you have other answers?
Yeah, there's some smattering in here, but we're almost done.
Okay, so we're going to go through the ones that we have remaining, I don't have those here.
Correct.
We're going to go through the ones that Laura has remaining, that she can share the answers with us, and then I'm going to call for adjournment so that we can get those answers, and then we'll reconvene. Laura will disseminate the answers in, in enough time. So let's finish this up, and then I've got a couple of more things to, to cover, just to give you all an update on where we are.
Uh, question was, what is the value of the 10 acres that was provided to Nashville Soccer Club as part of the lease, and is that consistent with the amount that Bristol isn't willing to commit to? That was kind of covered in our previous of why the Bristol lease isn't the same as the soccer lease. And then one important difference is the, this proposal does not include development, private development. So like I said, there's several questions that we are, that came in later that we will get answers to, but there is the question about an alternative proposal to renovate the Speedway. At the November 8th meeting, Mayor's Office mentioned that Metro Planning was working with the independent review and costing of necessary capital improvements to the site. What is the status of this work? So I met with them today, they came and visited the site, we did a tour of the Speedway, took them around to see the track, all the infield buildings, as well as the grandstands, even went up on the roof, so saw the whole thing, and they are anticipating completion of the report by February 3rd.
That's, would give us an estimated price of what it would cost?
Yes, so in 2016- So in 2016, we did a safety and function review of the track. And it looked at, like, the track itself, the surface, the lighting, the fencing, the walls, and kind of gave an estimate. It was a pretty wide range of cost on to improve those. This assessment goes a little bit further because what that one did not include was the grandstands. It didn't include an evaluation of, say, ADA compliance or improvements. Some functional needs such as, how do we provide food and beverage service? Those types of things. So they're going to be looking at, it's a little larger scope than what was done in 2016, but essentially, it is a safety and condition assessment update to that 2016 report.
And what was that estimate then?
11, taxing my memory. It was a range of around $11 million, if I'm not mistaken. Tom?
I think 11 is in the right range, and I think the range was down to whether lights were included or not.
We have, yes, we do have lights on the track. About 40% of them at this point have been transitioned to LED. So we've got another 60% that are still metal halide. So.
I have a follow-up, but I didn't want to jump in front of Anthony. So do you expect to get from Metro Planning a list of necessary repairs or a list of necessary repairs attached to dollar figures? And the reason I ask is, the second would be more helpful to know sort of what the price tag is. But I know that an RFP process can be a long period. So what will we get on February 3?
I anticipate getting a list of things that need to be updated because the feedback that I gave them was, you know, we want to obviously maintain our current operations, but it has to last us, it has to have some longevity, the improvements. So it's not just aesthetics. We don't want to take what we have and throw a coat of paint on it and call it improved, like, the condition of pavement services, all of that, things that, meaningful improvements to the track that are going to take us decades again into the future. And kind of looking at that future to say, what are the trends so that we can continue to support not only racing, but other events that we hold at Speedway as well? So I do expect that list and then a dollar amount attached to it.
That's what I want, so that's great. I'm aligned. Just want to make sure that's what we're expecting to get.
All right. I've already answered the question. We did talk a little bit about the impact to the fairgrounds by the track management being assigned to Bristol. And I think I covered that unless there are any questions about that. So there were some other just clarifying questions about environmental impact study as far as, what is the process to have an environmental impact study done on the area where the proposed work will take place? And I took that as like a phase one, those are new questions, so you may not have seen them. I added those today. But I took that as more of the hazardous materials, like a phase one environmental of the site, and that is included in the document. And that is, would be Bristol's responsibility as part of the pre-construction work to evaluate that.
And I'll just chime in. I think it's an important consideration, but I know from this sort of enormous amount of liability of environmental remediation, that I'm sure that we are, and Tom, I'd love you to chime in, that we feel very protected from a sort of superfund, you know, hazardous waste point of view as far as Metro.
The cost of any necessary remediation is part of, going to be part of the construction budget. So we talked previously about what happens if we have a gap that we can't close between the available revenue sources and the cost of construction. That's a little bit of a wild card. But other phase ones have been done on this property, not specifically the area within the racetrack, but elsewhere on the property. And although there could conceivably be surprises, I don't think anybody's expecting a superfund site.
Yes. And I'll just say, my question, this was one of my questions, and I'm just curious about the process and whether or not an environmental impact study can be done before construction to even make sure that the property, the land can actually sustain such a structure.
Yeah, I see that as something slightly different than an environmental impact study, but they will certainly do structural soil boardings and other things to make sure that it's adequately supported.
Yeah, because, I mean, also too, because it floods nearby. So when we build a structure, where will that water go? Will we then start seeing, before we finish paying off a 30-year bond obligation, will we even have a, you know, a stand? You know, and I'm only asking because, I mean, I hate to beat a dead horse, but I'm living in a building right now that we've been asked to vacate because of the construction that's going on next door. And there's become structural issues because they want to build a hotel directly beside a brand-new building, and that land has not been able to withhold the crane. The foundation broke. The foundation broke in our garage in three days before Christmas. While we were sitting in here, I received a notice that I needed to leave my home. You know, so with the 30,000-seat stadium, with the three apartment buildings that are right here that we're building, and all of that work, do we know if the land can actually even sustain any more trauma?
That's going to be part of the design process, and they do lots and lots of soil analyses to make sure that they've got a foundation in place that will be able to support it. And you're going to have representatives on a design oversight committee that can report back to you if they have any concerns. But I realize that is a horror story, and my office has heard a little bit about it through other channels, I'll say. But that's pretty rare, and I would expect litigation over that.
The next several questions have to do with the NCVC and the funding that they have identified to contribute to the construction budget. And the question was, where is the 17 million from the NCVC coming from and how is it able to be used for the raceway? And NCVC has enough in a Metro Reserve to pay that portion upfront, is the answer that we received back. Several of these were related, so let me go ahead and get through all of these. And then if there's any CBC questions, we can document those. Is this CBC funding a lump sum or payments over time? It's actually both because there is a $17 million payment, $4 million going to pre-construction costs. Their remaining approximate $13 million helps lower the debt, so that'd go towards hard construction costs. And in addition, CBC would pay $650,000 a year for 30 years. So there's, there's an upfront and there's annual payments by the CBC. Does this mean that the 17 million minus the $4 million for pre-development is the same money NCVC will be paying to rent the 20 days or in addition to? So the 17 million, or the 13 million does, well, actually both, the 17 million does help reduce the total dollar amount that Metro would have to borrow to finance the project. I guess I kind of cut and pasted the exact same answer. It's kind of the same.
But then the question goes, I guess we haven't seen the agreement from CBC.
You haven't.
And it is for 30 years that they are agreeing to pay $650,000. And that was my question, was that a vote by the board? Was that a decision made by a person? Like, how do we know? Because like, I'm not guaranteed to be here past 2027, you know? So the decisions that we're making here will be, right, so will they be held to it for 30 years? What if the CBC goes away? I mean, what if, you know, it turns into something else, you know, other than the CBC and becomes another entity? How will we be guaranteed the payments for 30 years?
You know, I had the same, I know Tom's going to tell us that, the actual answer, but I had the same concern. And I was wondering if we could insert in the lease, the CBC or a successor or competitor, or not a competitor, a successor or another organization that's designated by Metro Council or something? Because it's a fair point. I mean, it's an entity that exists today. We expect it to continue to exist. I hope it continues to exist for the city. It's an excellent thing to have. But if it stops existing, can we just insert language, a successor or a different organization? But Tom, I'd love your answer.
No, I hadn't, actually hadn't anticipated this. And I need to look at the CBC agreement and how it works in this context too. But my recollection is that Bristol's actually on the hook for it as far as Metro goes. It's a pass-through payment. It doesn't get paid directly to Metro. It gets paid to the CBC, pays, do they pay Bristol directly or do they pay us?
I think CBC pays Bristol, and then Bristol pays...
All this to say, let us get a clear answer to that. And yes, if it needs to be amended to say a successor organization, we'll take a look at that.
And I will add that in response to that question about board approval, this is, they indicated that essentially they're buying dates for future events on the site, those 20 dates that are contemplated in the agreement. And it was a strategic decision by them, and it was board-approved. And those are all the questions and answers that we have to date. Like I said, we do have about maybe 10 questions that are outstanding. And if any more come in, we'll add those to the list, get those answered before the next work session.
So we are going to, as Laura shared, we're going to compile that list. Anything you have to add to it, let us know. If you have specific asks or clarifications that you would like insofar as how we address any of these agreements in terms of the operation of the property and how that moves forward, the collaboration among the property users, anything that you would like to see addressed in that document, excuse me, we're happy to share that. That's an ongoing conversation. And as we shared before, it's like 95%, just a few things to tweak. And then, of course, to certainly add in the things that we've already addressed tonight. As far as moving forward with the schedule, I am not scheduling another meeting until I know we have everything we need because we can each study these things, we can reach out to Tom and John to get answers that we need. And once we have this study completed, we will then convene a work session. Following a work session, we will convene another public hearing. And that is what the wrap-up of this will look like. We, during that work session, may be very well-placed at that point to offer information to the administration and to the other parties of things that we want. And then as, as we get to that point, we'll move forward with the next scheduling. But that's, we're trying to get everything out on the plate so that we can serve it with dessert. And yes, it's 7:10, and I was thinking about food. So is there any other comment that any of the other commissioners, I see a green light over here. Do you want to add anything? Commissioner?
I was just going to move that we adjourn the work session.
Well, then do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I am an aye, and we're adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.